I'd like to open the meeting. Mount Isa City Council acknowledges the Kalkadun and Injolingi people, traditional custodians of the land on which we meet today, and pay our respects to elders past, present and emerging. We extend that respect to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples here today. Please note this ordinary meeting of Mount Isa City Council may be livestreamed and recorded in accordance with council's recording of council meeting policy. As a visitor in the public gallery, your presence may be recorded. By remaining in chambers, it is assumed your consent is given if your image is inadvertently broadcast. I'd like to welcome Pastor Keith Christie from the Christian Outreach Centre to provide the prayer for our meeting. Welcome.
Thanks, Senator. Thanks so much, councillors and mayor. Lord, I just pray today, Father, for wisdom and understanding in all things. Father, as these people watch over our city and take our city forward. Lord, I pray for unity amongst them because, Lord, you said where there is unity, you command the blessings. And, Lord, I just pray for your blessings upon their life as they work together in unity for the betterment of our city. And, Lord, I thank you for each one of them today. I thank you for their commitment, Lord God. And I thank you, Father God, that, Lord, that you watch over them, Father, and help them in every way. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen. Bless you so much.
Thank you, Pastor Keith. I would like to move that we accept a leave of absence from councillor Doyle. Do I have a second for that motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, councillor Crowther. Public participation?
You've got a vote.
Oh, sorry, all in favour of accepting councillor Doyle's? Sorry. Your yes for that, councillor Tully?
Yeah.
Yep, sorry. Our public participation person just left. Okay, confirmation of previous minutes. Do I have someone to move item 5.1? Minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the 26th of June 2024.
Yeah, I'll move that the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the 26th of June 2024 be confirmed as true and correct record.
Thank you, councillor Crowther. Do I have a second for that motion?
Yeah, I'll second that, too.
Thank you, councillor Coglan, all in favour? That's carried. Do I have a mover for 5.2 minutes of the special meeting held on the 26th of June 2024? That would be the budget meeting?
No, that was held after, wasn't it?
Yeah, same day.
Ballard.
Thank you, councillor Ballard. A second, please. Councillor Crowther, all in favour?
I read. Actions from the previous council meeting. Item 6.1, outstanding actions from previous council meetings as at the 18th of July 2024. Do I have a mover for that motion?
Yeah, I move that the council receives the notes and outstanding actions from the previous council meeting from 18th of July 2024.
Thank you. Second, please.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Thank you, councillor Coglan. Does anyone have anything to speak?
Yeah, just quickly about it. There's a few there that are still standing right back from like 2023. We're going to look at trying to get action on these just so we can sort of clear a lot of them up. Just because the list just gets longer and we just seem to be, they just copy and paste over, so, yeah.
Thank you.
What's going to be done? Is we just looking into it or?
And to be honest, the ones from 2023 look like they're policies that need updating, so it's not really budgetary constraints, so we can probably get that done, cleaned up. All in favour? Carried. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest? Neil. Okay, Meryl Minnit. The MIM 100 Ball was held on Saturday night and it was an occasion to reflect on our history as a town, how we have predominantly been a one-company town for the last 100 years, and the opportunity, security and lifestyle that that has afforded so many of us over the past century. But it was also a time to mark a new direction, a coming of age and maturity. There is an understanding, as I keep saying, that mining is as much our future as it is our past, that it will be in a more diversified, sustainable and innovative way. The mentality of rip and ship are past, as the CEO loves to say, and we need to be value adding to achieve maximum economic benefit. I had the opportunity to deliver the opening speech. I expressed disappointment at the announcement of the underground copper mine closure, but also gratitude that we have had 18 months' notice to finalise our economic transition plan. Council will be the first presentation in at the MIM Limited Bill hearing on the 6th of August, and we are working hard at the moment in preparation for that. During July, we had NADOC Week and I was able to attend celebrations in Mount Isa and Kamewell. As a council, it is our aim to have our spaces activated by events like these that benefit the whole community and bring people together. Nara, Arakuna, Puna, Watinia, together we are stronger. The week was a credit to everyone involved as it has highlighted the ongoing struggles of Indigenous people in our community, but it also got the whole community involved in celebrating Indigenous culture and everyone definitely kept the fire burning loud, black and proud. The march from outback at Isa to the Civic Centre lawn was very well attended, as was the family fun day. Next month, we will be, sorry, the next month we have celebrating culture will be September, when there will be the annual multicultural festival put on by the Catholic Church and also council's new event, Welcoming Week, where we will be celebrating both our oldest culture, our First Nations people, and all cultures that have joined us since. We will be holding our next citizenship ceremony in conjunction with this event on the 17th of September at Centennial Place. It is during school holidays, so we hope everyone will take advantage of that and come along and help us celebrate. NADOC Day in Kamewell last Friday was also a big success, thanks to the Drovers Camp in conjunction with Myuma and Rainbow Gateway for organising the elders lunch, the children's animal mass parade and other cultural activities on the day. I would also like to congratulate the Drovers Camp Committee on their ongoing mural project. The ones they've got done so far are looking fantastic and there's more work ongoing. While we're discussing Kamewell, I'd like to thank the community for being patient and working with us at this time while we don't have a council employee living there. The team here from Mount Isa are travelling out on a regular basis, providing the different services as required, though this is hopefully only a temporary measure and a more permanent arrangement can be put in place shortly. The consultants' reports on the pillars, the drafts have been submitted to council and are being consolidated to present to the community, industry, government and QTAIC. A reminder that the community information session is being held by Glencore this afternoon at the John Midland Centre and it'd be great to get as many community members there as we possibly can. AMCAR, we had the meeting in Canberra last month. Mount Isa is proud to be a founding member of the Mining Cities Alliance and the work being conducted by that advocacy group is very important as we go through our economic restructure. It was beneficial to meet the politicians in Canberra to discuss issues pertinent to mining cities, such as returning a percentage of royalties to the regions, advocating for a seat at the Net Zero Authority table, progressing the advocacy around fringe benefit tax for housing and mining cities, and sharing thoughts and strategies for attracting and retaining labour in the regions, such as hex forgiveness, zone rebate allowances and first homeowner amendments. AMCAR is looking to grow its membership base and the more cities that join the discussion, the stronger advocacy and the better outcomes for everybody involved. All councillors will be attending the LGAQ Conference in Brisbane, which has been held in October, the week prior to the state election. We believe this is an excellent time to be out in unity, advocating for the adequate funding we require for our economic restructure. The work being done in relation to youth crime continues. Council is in the process of making sure our cameras are operational and the entire system is working as it should be. I would like to congratulate the Mithenkaya Nagula Young People Ahead Group on receiving funding to run the intensive on-country programme. We met with them this week, which was coincidentally the day the funding was announced, and we look forward to hearing more about their plans and working in conjunction with them to help achieve community outcomes. A hundred days of us being in council passed last week, and I want to take some time during this meeting to reflect on our initial achievements and outline our future direction. During general business, all councillors will have the chance to say what they see as our wins and what we continue to work towards next. What I'm happy about so far that we've achieved, there's been zero internal OIA complaints, and that has meant that our governance officer has been able to work on disaster management mitigation instead of investigating complaints. We have the beginnings of a PMO so that we can manage projects internally and get better value for money for ratepayers. The work done by Alan Bailey in conjunction with council has allowed us to be able to take restorative justice workers here at council. And we have a permanent CEO locked in until the end of 2025, providing continuity and consistent leadership to those in the organisation. These are each small things which will make a big difference over time. As a council, we all believe that getting the small things right is important, and we still have many challenges, but we can see improvement. Thank you. Reading and consideration of correspondence, there's Neil. I'd like to go on to the notices of motion. Item 10.1, notice of motion Buchanan Park amenities trailer. I'll hand over to councillor James Coglan for that.
I'd like to move a motion that in accordance with section 3, sorry, 2369B of Local Government Regulation 2012, the council advertise in the Mount Isa Weekly and on council website for Mount Isa community organisations to apply to bid for two, a male and a female amenities blocks, that are currently located inside the Buchanan Park racetrack for removal by the successful bidder, and that the two trailers are to be placed in the next available fleet disposal auction.
Do I have a second for that motion?
Ballard.
Councillor Ballard, would you like to speak to that? Councillor Coglan?
Yeah, I think it's a start of this council looking at the best use of facilities and assets that we have. And having seen those assets or those amenities trailers in the centre of that Buchanan Park for so long and underutilised, I'm sure there's a community organisation out there that will get great benefit from them. I think that's our aim, is to help our community. I think this will do so.
Would anyone else like to speak to that?
Yeah, I just, there's a couple of quick questions. I'm not against the motion, but I'd just like to, the cost of what those two ablution blocks cost us as a council was 205,000 plus GST each, which is a lot of money. And I mean, as a bidder, are we going against what we believe in is every ratepayer's got the ability to have a chance at it, not so the just community organisations? The cost of doing that ramp, I mean, I think you wouldn't be surprised if it cost 100 grand, and that's additional to the 205 plus GST each article. Now, they're being set up as a mobile, there is the belly tank on them. The rainwater tank has been taken away from the both units, but they both have belly tanks for everyone to use if we wanted to go down that direction. That's the only issue that I'd probably talk about. They are built to be mobile. You know, where in radio time you could bring them into the, you know, into the park, you know, down there beside Bell and Moira, you know, for toilets. Because we are lacking toilets in the facilities when we have a lot of people in town, not that we do have a lot of activities, but when we do have activities throughout the city, you know, we could utilise them then or we could utilise them in other areas of the radio grounds or of all community areas for that matter, or any private functions that were held at a rate.
Okay, so I guess the way to proceed is to take the initial motion to the vote. So, all in favour of motion 10.1? One, two, three, four, so that is carried. No, I was against. Okay, motion 10.2?
Can I ask why?
Because initially I thought they would not be able to be used by different groups moving around because I thought they would have to put a septic tank in the ground to be able to utilise them. But on further advice, they do have the tanks under there, so they can be mobile. So I thought when we do have the street festival, they pretty much only need lino put on the flooring to upgrade them, and lino's not very expensive. So I thought there would be the potential for council to use them when we have larger events.
So why was that information not available before hearing? Why are we learning about that now? Because I asked for a report about the amenities trailers and that fact that John, councillor Tully's just mentioned, wasn't in there. And that's one of the reasons that we made this decision. So why wasn't that information provided?
I'd just also like to say that they've been mobile for the whole time, that they've been sitting there and they haven't been utilised. So, and groups have known that, council have known that, and no one's used it. But what we need to do, we've actually voted on the motion, so there was time for debate before it. You just need to move on.
Yeah, it's done. There's nothing we can do now. We voted on that, but you, sorry, you asked me why. I was just telling you why.
Move on.
Okay, notice of motion. So the motion is that the state government work in conjunction with the LGAQ and Queensland councils create a dedicated funding programme using collected mining royalties that will support Queensland's local resource reliant communities, economic transition and potential diversification opportunities when a mine closes. So the motion is that we present that at the state LGAQ meeting in October. Do I have a second for that motion?
Seconded, Kim Coglan.
Thank you, councillor Coglan. I guess that's pretty self-explanatory. We find ourselves in a situation where the mine in our area has paid, I couldn't even imagine how many millions of dollars in royalties over its history, and now I guess we need to find some way of funding an economic transition, and many communities will be going through the same thing as we move to a greener society, I guess. So that's why we're putting this motion forward. Any other comments on that?
And just for people that don't know the process, like this will be put up at the LGAQ Conference, but whether, it has to be voted on by all councils around, doesn't it?
Yep.
Yeah, definitely. We're just putting the motion forward and the process will go to LGAQ, who will look to see if there's been any motions in the past. They'll look and see if anyone's putting up similar motions this time and then maybe ask us to do this motion in conjunction with another council if there's a similar motion. And if not, we will move it ourselves and look for support from other communities.
And just on that note, all other councils have got a lot more votes than what we have as a Shire. The smaller the Shires, the less votes you get.
That is right. Some of the larger councils can have seven or eight votes, where I think we have two from memory.
Four, I think, and two in the West, I think.
Four?
I think it's four. Two in the Bush, I think it is, and four in the cities.
So it's up to us to lobby.
It is up to us to lobby. That's why we're there that whole week, to go around and talk to other councillors about what motions we're putting forward to try and get support when we actually present our motion, other than just other mining cities as well that will benefit from it.
Exactly right. And I'm fully supportive of this. I think it's something we've got to really do to really secure not just the future for Mount Isa as a city, but for all the other mining cities or towns that are going to be all dependent on mines. And then with the closure, that they've got to have some money that's been put aside for this planning in the future, which should have been done years ago. And I think, you know, you can see how royalties for regions got sort of misconstrued over the years, but if we can get this locked in and get it locked in properly, it'd be great to see.
Thank you. All in favour? That's carried unanimously. Executive Services Report, Sarah Neal. We'll go to item 12.1, Finance Overview Report, June 2024. Do I have a mover for that motion?
I move that council receives and accepts the June 2024 Finance Overview Report as presented.
Thank you, councillor Ballard. Do I have a second?
Second to Tully.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Would you like to speak to that, councillor Ballard?
Yes, please. We can see that the deferred payment of state government grants and subsidies and the reduction of our water dividend payment have had a hugely detrimental impact on the council's operational performance, leaving a financial hole of nearly 10 million dollars. The lack of consistency in the timing and the value of these payments makes budgeting extremely difficult. On top of these issues, council will be asked to make available nearly 400,000 to complete unbudgeted remedial work at the sewerage treatment plant. I think I speak for all my fellow councillors when I say it's disappointing and very frustrating that the condition of the plant hasn't been flagged with us as an operational risk. And only a month after we've passed the budget, we're being asked to make available funds that hadn't been earmarked for this work. That said, I'm hopeful that Greg Shaw's appointment as the council's water and sewerage matter will see us do better in this area.
Thank you, councillor Ballard. All in favour?
I'd like to ask-
Oh, sorry, further commentary, Deputy Mayor?
I'd like to ask a question to the Director of Finance.
No, we had a second and then councillor Tully seconded.
Yep.
Now councillor Coglan's on to the question.
No, no, you're all right.
Okay, just to the Director of Finance. Going on borrowings, would Mount Isa City Council be in a position, because we all know our infrastructure under the ground, especially for the water, is really, really critical at the moment. It's getting worse, it's not getting any better. Would there be a way that council could borrow to fix this as a major issue?
Well, to answer your questions through the chair, the last time that council took on any borrowings was around 2013, so it has been a while. In terms of the criteria for lending with Queensland Treasury, it's very strict. Water and sewer being an essential asset definitely is one of the projects that would be looked at favourably. However, we have to get a forward estimate or an actual proposal of what the capital cost and the scope of the work involved is required to figure out the best funding model for it. So it is a good project to get some borrowings for, definitely.
I mean, this was flagged numerous times by councillor Nick Tully in the last one. And I think it's something that council should look at because with all the, there's leaks everywhere popping up. I think it's something that needs to be done. Water is such a precious asset and, you know, we're putting all the money into the treatment plant. I think it's something that we should look at.
And before I head back to the director, I think councillor Coglan, or sorry, Deputy Mayor, that's one of the reasons why we're really advocating for North West Water so we can get 100% of those royalties returned to be able to reinvest in our infrastructure. Can I please hand over to the director?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through the chair, just letting the councillors know and the public know that as executive management team, we're working on a 10-year capital works programme for all our assets. So we will have better visibility over the amount of investment that's required from council. We're also going through a comprehensive revaluation of our water and sewer assets, and that will involve us getting up-to-date condition assessments on all of our assets, and that will drive all our forward plans.
Through the chair. Yeah, I brought this up here when probably the first meeting we had, talking about doing different areas of, instead of doing a blanket, just do the areas that are probably the oldest that we think that need doing. But also, whenever we resurface a street, probably look at that first end and just pressurise and do a pressure test on the water before we go, like we've done on West Street, and make sure we keep that in our thoughts that no use resealing streets and then all of a sudden we're ripping them up again. So can we pressure test areas that we know that there's work going to be done on resealing? The pressure test can be done six or 12 months out before that happens, so at least then we're not double handling jobs.
Yeah, I think the director and councillor Tully make a good point that everything needs to be done as part of a larger strategy. So, yeah, we need to look into that. Yes, councillor Ballard?
Do we have a timeframe for the 10-year plan?
Through the chair. I expect to have an initial one done probably within a month, but it's not just about age and materials, it's actually what soil they're in. I've actually known pipes to fail in five years, where others allow 25 years, depends how they're laid. So we need to actually do condition assessments, as the director of corporate said. And I'll move forward for a 10-year renewals programme, but in the overall, within 12 months, I should have a 30-year plan for council.
Okay, thank you. All in favour of receiving that report? That is carried. Okay, item 13.1, Community Development Overview Report, June 2024. Do I have a mover?
I'll move that council receives and accepts the June 2024 Community Development Overview Report as presented.
Thank you, councillor Coglan. Do I have a second?
Second to Tully.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Would anyone like to speak to that?
Yeah, I collected my free plant and it's still alive, so.
Doing better than me.
Yeah, more.
Yes, I've seen yours. It's sad. Yeah, I'd just like to congratulate the staff on what a great day that was. Go Green for Isa. It was really well attended, the line for the plants was outstanding and the education piece around recycling, I thought, was exceptional. Any other commentary? Okay, thank you. All in favour of receiving that report? Okay, item 13.2, Economic Development Overview Report, June 2024.
Yeah, I'll just move that council receives and accepts the May 2024 Economic Development Overview Report as presented.
Thank you, councillor Crowther. Do I have a second for that motion?
Second to Tully.
Councillor Tully, would you like to speak to that, councillor Crowther?
Are you going to hand over to Chad?
Councillor Crowther's requesting the director update on the report.
Thank you, Mayor and councillors. The critical elements in our economic development report is the focus on our underground copper response to Glencore's announcement of the closure of underground copper in July 2025. At this stage, we're at a point where the six pillars work, which is our internal working term for it. Staff have received the various consultants' reports, and we're in the stage of providing detailed feedback to those consultants and starting to develop our consolidated piece of work, which we'll then share with the chamber and with the public. The intent behind that is to make sure that we've got really clear direction on our initial response before doing the detailed workshops with the chamber. We've also been progressing with the tourism piece of work, which was a late-funded piece of work with the state government, focusing on what are the tourism opportunities within Mount Isa as a city and the local region. We've had some really good responses from the local tourism operators, as well as the various stakeholder workshops that we've held, and we're now in the final stages of preparing that. The other piece in the report that I'd turn your attention to is the discussion around our net zero piece of work. As you're aware from previous discussions, the intent behind developing up a net zero roadmap for council is to make sure we've got a really clear pathway to attract future investments within the city. Any new capital of any significance coming into Mount Isa is going to be linked to a net zero pathway, which is a requirement of all of our institutional investors. So this piece of work is about understanding how do we decarbonise local economy, develop new opportunities and make sure that we're building resilience into our local region, noting that we're going to continue to be a premier mining city. You also note that our existing economic strategy- You also note that our existing, um, economic strategy has a series of, um, goals and focuses. The s- the staff continue to deliver to those, and those are updated in the report. Happy to receive any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the director?
Yeah, Chad, with the, um, the recycle thing to, um.
Yeah, so when, within the MRF, we're trying to source opportunities to reuse materials locally, rather than shipping them off to the coast.
Do we, do we, we identify opportunities, do we need then investors to come in and undertake that, or as a council, do we undertake that? What's the process?
The current approach is that we're identifying business opportunities and then framing them up for potential expressions of interest. Uh, so if I just start with the basics of the MRF operations, uh, we've set a path to get sign off from the Department of Environment and Science under their End of Waste Code, that we can get the crushed glass to a point where we can reuse it. So, there's some regulatory loops with, uh, hoops we have to go through to, to get to each one of those. Um, but the intent is that we set these up as business opportunities, and then we'll do, uh, an expression of interest process potentially to either bring people in or to provide those opportunities to the community.
Does council, do we like cut red tape and encourage them to come in?
Absolutely. Uh, just a starting small example is, you would have seen on council's Facebook page, uh, an expression of interest for either community group, an individual or a business to come in and operate the Tencent recycling from, uh, various events. About half a million dollars worth of Tencent recyclables goes into our landfill each year. And so as a part of, uh, getting ready for, uh, curbside recycling, we've identified that as an opportunity for a small operator to come in and set up. Through our economic development team, we want to auspice that as much as possible, uh, remove barriers and, and case manage someone to come in and set that up as a micro business.
Quick one, um, like, everyone probably knows him, but he goes around and picks all the, um, bottles up out of the bins and all that, Barry Gundy. But he's, um, the biggest issue he may have is all his insurance. Is there, is there any way we can sort of, um, cut the red tape for them sort of fellows? Because, I mean, he has, he, he, he drives to Concurry, drives to Camwell and picks up all the rubbish, like all, every day, every single day. He's picking rubbish up somewhere, but he will get tied up with the red tape. Is there any chance of, of, um, sort of shortening that up for, for that sort of person? I, I've never talked to him about it, but I know he does it.
Sure. It's a good example. I'll take that example with him, uh, on notice. But the short answer is yes. Whenever someone wants to, uh, invest in Mount Isa and they contact our economic development team, uh, we take a case management approach to it. So, we want to make sure that people who are looking to set up here understand what the opportunity looks like, how we can make that process as smooth as possible, whether it's, uh, through business coaching, connecting them up with our colleagues in state development, uh, or trying to fast track processes through the planning system as much as possible. Uh, that is very much the approach we take.
So, we're going to encourage him to come and talk to you then? Because he, he probably won't, you know, unless we've told him to do.
Yeah. I'll have a chat with him.
And do you want to talk about that other thing or not, not this thing? For the, um, recycling there, do you know, for the green waste?
I can, uh, it's just-
Would, would we be more, um, better off doing that in an informal briefing? Or did you want to just ask it now?
Just for the sake of transparency.
That's all, and I thought-
Yeah.
Uh, just, just for the sake of transparency, since the councillor mentioned it, uh, the team is looking at how do we engage, uh, a local support person or a local contractor to help us get the green waste piles at the, uh, material recovery facility under control.
Thank you.
Because they're real bad. It's-
Yeah.
There's a lot of, uh, between, how many organs? Ten years worth of stuff out there?
Yeah, we do need to get on control of the green waste and, um, our recycling, get that set up. Um, everyone in favour of receiving that report?
I just, I, sorry, I just wanted to mention one other thing, just with the motorsports advisory committee. Did have another meeting in July there, so it's sort of a bit outdated that, the Friday, the fourteenth of June. Um, we've started having in area, we've sort of set a few tasks out for the guys, um, in part of the committee in it. They've started bringing back all their, um, measurements and area requirements, so we can start now planning to sort of piece those areas together. Um, yeah, and that was pretty much it.
Yes, they're very enthusiastic.
They are.
I've seen, seen into those emails, so that's great that they're so keen to get going. Um, back to the director.
Uh, just apologies councillor for the confusion around the, the dates in the meetings. Uh, because these reports are currently, uh, reported monthly, and that's something that I'd like to talk to you about in briefing. Um, they're written as past tense, so we would normally talk about the July meeting in the next report, um, but completely acknowledge your point that it is odd that we're talking about the previous meeting, even though we've had two since.
Yep.
Yeah. And I, I think that historically, that's always been the case, and that's why it's great. We have the opportunity to, you know, speak to the reports and give the latest updated information. So, all in favour of receiving the report? Carry. Okay, item thirteen point three, Environmental and Biosecurity Overview Report, May twenty twenty four and June twenty twenty four.
Um, I'd move that council receives and accepts the May twenty twenty four and June twenty twenty four Environmental and Biosecurity Overview Report as presented.
Thank you councillor Coghlan. Do I have a second for that motion?
Second to councillor Tully.
Thank you councillor Tully. Would you like to speak to that councillor Coghlan?
Um, yeah, I think there's been a, a couple of new additions to the, the team, so, um, and they're in a pretty busy time of year, so, um, I'm sure, uh, their education is progressing very quickly, but, um, yeah, they've done a lot of work there, so it's a good start.
Thank you. All in favour of receiving that, um, can I, deputy mayor?
Um, have we got with the, uh, environmental biosecurity, I think it's in ER, um, licensed swimming pools, do we legally, who checks the swimming pools once? Like, are they checked every two years? Is there a list of houses that have pools and who checks them, um, every two years? I think legislation wise, they've got to be checked every two years.
Uh, so there's various controls, uh, through you, ma- madam mayor. Uh, there's various controls depending on whether it's a public pool or whether it's a, a pool at someone's house. Uh, the trigger for someone, a pool at someone's house is if there's a known defect or whether, um, the property's sold. So, when you sell a property, uh, you need to get a safety inspection done. Uh, in terms of the, the public pools, they've got a slightly different process, uh, and it's, it's slightly more regulated.
Uh, through the chair, I think the rentals are actually going back to twelve months now. But there's a registry here with the councillor Coggo, if you want to see that. They, you, if you, you can put it in any address, and that'll come up whether it's been, um, council approved or, or le- or legal.
Righto. I just more was, um, alluding to are the pools checked regularly for, like, for defects?
Yes, they are.
Okay, right, that's what I want to know. I also want to know about the feral cats. Are we doing more work on, on that and the cats in the CBD?
So, just to round out that last question, sorry. Um, the team undertook, uh, a focused piece of work on pool compliance over the last six months, uh, and so we're up to date in terms of our, our pool safety requirements. That'll become an ongoing piece of work, but the, the blitz and the backlog is, has been completed. So, with regards to the biosecurity and the issue with feral cats, there has been an uptick in feral cats across the city. Mount Isa is unique in the sense that we're a remote city, and so we need to balance our, our city requirements of domestic pets with the fact that we are in a remote context, and we have to deal with biosecurity, whether it's wild dogs, feral cats, uh, and the like. Um, the team is reporting, yeah, an uptick in feral cats, and so we're putting some additional controls in place for that. Uh, there'll be a report coming to the next meeting with some options around that.
Okay, then. And, um, uh, the mulcher, is the mulcher going, I know it's only a small mulcher, but is it making a difference along the riverbed?
So, the clean up of the riverbed is, is underway. Uh, we've got a front end of mulcher for a skid steer and for a loader. Uh, we're balancing resources at the moment to get it running, but we have got a programme underway to start to clear out all the invasive species within the river.
Okay, thank you for that.
All in favour of receiving the report? Carry. Item thirteen point five, splashes overview report, oh no, sorry, thirteen point four, development and land use overview report, quarter four.
Uh, I recommend that council receives and accepts the quarterly development and land use overview report as presented.
Can I have a second for the motion?
Seconded, Kim Coghlan.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Would you like to speak to that councillor Coghlan?
Um, no, no.
That's fine. Does anyone else have any comment?
I have. Um, I'd just like to ask, uh, as I haven't had any too much to do with this, but I have had a few people in the public say to me that our turnaround time is quite long when they're waiting for development applications, building searches and things like that. Are we, are we electronic or are we still paper? Sorry, I need to ask someone that.
Uh, so we do have a paper based process. We are looking at a digitisation option. Uh, we do have a fairly low volume of development applications, so the, the cost of implementing software versus the return, um, is, is questionable. Um, we have got a programme that we're about to develop up with the team on how we optimise and, and sort of reduce those assessment timeframes down.
Okay, thank you for that.
Through the chair, um, property searches are still taking a long time, though. They're still taking thirty-five days.
I don't have the timeframes in front me. I'll take that on notice.
Thank you. All in favour of, um, receiving the report? Carry. Item thirteen point five, splashes overview report, June twenty twenty four.
Thirteen point five, yep. The council receives and accepts the June two thousand and twenty four splashes overview report as presented.
Do I have a second for the motion? Councillor Crowther, would you like to speak to that, deputy mayor?
Yeah, just, it is a lot slower at the moment at the, the pool. It has been for June and going into July. It's been a bit too cold. Um, I just would like to say during these low times and when the pool actually closes, are we looking at all in putting in another barbecue now that we've got also the, the tower there? It's taken up a bit of room where people go for barbecues. Is there any way we can put in another barbecue that has been talked about in the past at the front part? And, um, is anything going to be done about the grass hanging down the wall along Fourth Avenue from the pool? Not a good look.
Yeah, no, I agree with that.
So, whippersnapper?
No, no, just, just kill it, just kill it, right, right, to the mayor, sorry.
Whippersnip.
Yeah, but if you just kill it, it'll die then, it'll, it'll, like, it just needs, like, poison along the, the fence going out to the, because it does look terrible.
I've made a note of it, councillor, and we'll take the maintenance issue, uh, on notice.
Okay, thank you. And the barbecue, um, could you take that on notice as well? Okay, thank you.
Okay, all in favour of accepting the report? Carry unanimously. Um, thirteen point six, Regulatory Services Report, May twenty twenty four to June twenty twenty four.
Okay. Um, the council receives and accepts a Regulatory Services Overview Report from May twenty twenty four to June twenty twenty four as presented.
Do I have a second for the motion?
Second to councillor T-
Thank you councillor Tully. Um, would you like to speak to that councillor Coghlan?
I think we, I think we sort of touched on it above because we talked about the, um, the feral cats and-
Yeah, thank you. Okay, all in favour of receiving the report? Carry. Item thirteen point seven, Environmental Grant Programme, twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, round one. Do I have a mover for the motion?
Yeah, yes.
Open and then close.
That's thirteen point seven.
Environmental Grant Programme. Um, I recommend that council approves the following. One, the application, applicants receive the items specified in their applications to the dollar values listed in the table below. And two, the applicants receive the complimentary caddies for food waste to the dollar value listed in the table below.
Do I have a second for the motion?
Second deputy mayor.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Anyone like to speak on it?
Yeah, I'd, I'd just, um, I'd just like to see the, um, is it, what's the word, Chad? Is it reconciled when you-
Acquittal?
Acquittal, uh, quitting the grant.
Yeah, um, I'd just like to, um, see the acquittal come back to council if we could to, to make sure that, um, that dollar value has been used as it was stated.
So, um, come back to the councillors so we can see?
Yes.
Yep. Because I know it comes back to council, but I've never seen it come back to councillors. So, that would be good.
Uh, through the, through you, madam mayor. Um, it's not typically the sort of thing we'd bring to a full council meeting, but it is something we can, uh, discuss in a briefing in terms of the acquitting of grants.
Um, I'd just, am I right to say something? Through the chair, through the chair, through the chair, through the mayor? I'd like to say, sorry, I forget that.
I know.
That's a loaded question.
Um, I, no, I'd just like to say, um, because the mayor and myself probably the only ones that have been, um, with this grant, uh, from the start, and it's really, really good to see. And Chad, just congratulations to your section and all the work that's been done on this. When this grant very firstly come out, a lot of people didn't know what it was for, they didn't know what they could apply for. So, it was, and even with council going out scratching and talking to people, we still weren't getting a lot of applicants. So, it's really great to see, and it's, it's great to see that the schools are leading the charge, but I would, uh, a lot of, a lot more community groups can get involved with this grant. So, it would be really, um, I'd just like to say again, thank you to your section for doing all their hard work, because it's really great to see all these people, schools doing the work.
Thank you for the feedback and we'll pass it on to the team.
Thank you, deputy mayor. And I think we can, you know, all acknowledge if we want our recycling to be successful down track, down the track, education needs to start at the schools to get us, um, recycling ready. So, yeah, I echo those sentiments.
Through the mayor, just a quick one.
Yes, councillor Tully.
Is, um, I see most of these are schools. Is there any way that you can through, um, um, who, the, um, who's the one up at Overlander? The big, no, no, not, no, they're in the, they're in the Overlander. Um, no, no.
The Overlander?
Get you in. Is there any, is there any way that get you in can be sort of-
Healing.
Get you healing, sorry. Can, um, can they sort of be talked or notified of it or something to see if they can, you know, encourage some pointy areas to be picked up? Because most of this seems to be, uh, schools only. Um, I, I don't know what-
Open to everyone.
Yeah, I know, but can, we may have to encourage them to see if they can utilise it maybe.
Yeah, I think the intention for this round was to do with education. Is that correct? So, um, schools were the ideal target. Um, yeah. But I take on your point, the whole community needs to be educated about recycling. Okay, all in favour of receiving that report? Thank you, that's carried. Item thirteen point eight, requests for sponsorship, Commerce North West Northern Outback Business Awards. Do I have a mover for that motion?
Yeah, I'll move that council approves the sponsorship to Commerce North West in the amount of eight thousand dollars plus GST to be a silver sponsor in the twenty twenty four Northern Outback Business Awards.
Thank you councillor Crowther. Do I have a second, eh?
Second to councillor Tully.
Thank you councillor Tully. Would anyone like to speak to this?
Uh, I'll just quickly open up. Um, obviously the Northern Outback Business Awards have been running for a lot of years, um, and it's always been run by the Commerce North West. It's a great way to sort of showcase a lot of the businesses and their achievements. So, um, while we're sort of probably trying to encourage them to get these applications in, in the, in the funding period so we can sort of budget for it a lot better, I think they, um- while we're sort of probably trying to encourage them to get these applications in, in the, in the funding period, so we can sort of budget for it a lot better, I think they, um, it is a, um, an event that we sort of still need to sponsor in really so, so we can keep the, um, the recognition for businesses alive.
Uh, just through the chair again, are they doing, like this, this event used to be a prestigious event in Mount Isa and it's gone down over the years, like, what work, and I, I'm not in, involved with Commerce North, Northwest, have there been things done in the last twelve months to improve on it?
Um, not that I know of, um, obviously they sort of, it's a work in progress every year, um. I think again with like the, the likes of Commerce, the, their support's probably down in the way, they, like their membership base is up, um, active members, I'm not quite sure, like, I, I still feel they are active memberships. Like the active members are still the same sort of small group, um, it's good that they're getting new members in, but then they're, um, sort of, they're doing what they can, I suppose, and surviving, um. It, it needs like the businesses really to sort of get behind it and, and make it, um, what it was back in the day, um, but their support to it and, and what they do in, um, in previous years is obviously in a, in a slight decline, I suppose, but like a lot of other events, probably feeling the same pinch. Um, but yeah, it's sort of something we've sort of got to look towards and sort of, if they're open for sort of feedback, I'm sure we could help them out with that and even help out rather than money some days, it could be help out with sort of in-kind support or even sort of, um, sort of labour in, in, you know, promoting the, promoting an event and getting, um, applications in as well.
Okay, thank you councillor Crowther.
Because I have, through, through the chair, I just have noticed that in the last three years, it's really in a bit of a decline, so probably someone has to look at it and see where, um, what the problem is, I think, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I think if we're going to support it, which, um, I mean, we should, I think, um, as councillors, councillors, it's going to be our job to try and encourage the community support, to support it, because we want to be sponsoring like really successful events, so we need to do what we can to make sure it's a great evening. I just do want to remind the organisation though that they should be applying for sponsorship during the, the funding round so that we're able to adequately budget for it, and, um, I mean, every time, um, these things come out, out of round, we say just a reminder to, um, apply during the sponsorship and funding round, so can we just make a note when, when we go back to Commerce Northwest if we approve this, that next time it won't be approved if it's out of round, because we really need to be able to budget for these things adequately, get our value from sponsorship and make sure the events are really successful.
Yeah, I agree.
Glad to support that Madam Mayor, because I can understand voluntary organisations, um, but I believe there's paid positions here and so they really should be, um, in on time.
Uh, just quickly correction, there is no paid people on, on the Commerce Board now.
On the board?
On, no, no, no one's paid on Commerce. They're all voluntary now.
The board, but is there workers?
No, none at all.
None?
No. They did have a part timer, but she, when she resigned, they never replaced her.
So they're all voluntary now?
Yep, as far as I'm aware, but yeah, I'm ninety nine, ninety nine percent sure that's, that's the case.
Do we have, does council have a representative on that board?
Uh, no.
Did Ross Diney is on that board, is he not?
Oh, he could be, yes.
Yeah, Ross Diney's on the board.
That's correct, so Ross, we, we do have a staff member as a representation on the, on the group. Um, so if there's any particular feedback or if you want to discuss this in a workshop in terms of opportunities, uh, we can feed that back through to the committee.
Okay, thank you. All in, all in favour of, um, the sponsorship? Unan, um, yes, yes, unanimously supported, thank you. Um, thirteen, with that condition that it won't be supported next time unless it's in the round. Um, thirteen point nine requests for sponsorship Northwest Queensland Mental Health Network.
Um, I'll make the recommendation that council approves Northwest Queensland Mental Health Network to receive a venue highway fee waiver to the value of three thousand one hundred and seventy one dollars fifty cents inclusive of GST to support the mental health and wellbeing symposium being held at the Mount Isa Civic Centre on the tenth of October two thousand and twenty four.
Do I have a second for that?
Seconding councillor Tully.
Thank you councillor Tully, anyone like to speak?
I'll just, this was held last year as well, and I think it is a good opportunity for, um, all the, um, anyone in the mental health space to get together and, uh, talk about any issues they have, problems, how they've sold them, um, I was very fortunate to be at last year's and I think it was a really good opportunity for, for them all to come together and, and talk about making Mount Isa a, a leading, you know, leading in, in the mental health space.
Yeah, once again, um, we all love to support these things and it's very important that they happen within our community, but if it is going to be an annual event, they also need to get that into the sponsorship and funding round.
I think they've written something there on that, that they're not eligible or something for it, um. I'll look into that later.
It's not feasible for them to complete a normal sponsorship application.
They've, they've put that in there.
But it's not, it's not too bad meaning coin though, I guess, not as bad as what we've got to come out of them.
Yeah.
You know, when you go, when you've got to come up with money, it's a different.
It just says, um, in, in the background, and this would have been, this would have been, uh, our officers have done this, as this is a free community event from a collaborative group, it is not feasible for them to complete a normal sponsorship application. So it must have something to do with it. Is that correct Chad? Director?
Uh, apologies Madam Deputy Mayor, I wasn't following the conversation.
So it looks like it's been held by the Northwest Queensland Mental Health Network, so are they not an organisation?
It's their symposium.
Yeah, so this is a consultation piece being operated by, um, the department. So they'll be holding the session here in, here in the council. A bit.
Should they be applying during the funding round or no?
Says here that, it says, um, as this is a free community event from a collaborative group, it is, it was not feasible for them to complete a normal sponsorship application.
Which, which I saw as fine as being a one-off event, but it looks like if it's going to be an annual event, we might just need to put that in our schedule, that's all.
Yeah, it was a timing issue, so we can, we can resolve that with the group for the next round.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, all in favour? Carrie. Um, item fourteen point one major projects overview, June twenty twenty four.
Councillors, just on this, um, as, as part of the briefing, you know that, um, we've set up the PMO office, so we've only had one meeting to date, so, um, what, what you'll see over time is a, um, an improved sort of reporting regime around that, so as, as we move forward, it'll just, you know, reports will start to improve as we go and delivery timeframes and any issues that we have, risks and that sort of stuff will be, um, reported regularly and, and we're just building the capacity up of, of that as we speak.
Through the chair, um, can I ask something now?
Should we act, sort of first, move it and second it?
Yeah, let's just move the motion, second it and then we'll get the conversation happening and on the table, how does that sound?
Yep.
Do I have a mover? I think it's yours councillor Tully.
Yeah, a recommendation, um, that the council receives a notice of June two thousand and twenty four major projects overview report.
Thank you councillor Tully, do I have a second, oh? Thank you councillor Crowther, over to you Deputy Mayor for your question.
You're right.
Oh, de, that's me, um, sorry, through the chair, um, with all these major projects, is there any way, like as, um, I know all the new councillors have come in and one of their, um, one of their frustrations is trying to get on top of everything and know how things are working, but is there any way that it, even myself as a councillor, that we, um, we are invited to some of these meetings, uh, to go over things like what happens historically is everything seems to happen and then it comes to the councillors and gets presented, and yet then we start pulling it apart because of things that we can see go wrong, and I'd just like it to not get to that spot. Um, is there, is this what the, what you're aiming at?
Yeah, so, so what we'll probably do is use the, the time at workshops, because obviously need to go into details about things, so we'll probably just set aside probably, I'm just thinking off the top of my head, probably every couple of months, just to give a full briefing on where we are with projects and that'll give councils an opportunity to know the intimate details of each of the projects that they've funded.
Yep, um, can I just ask, I, I'd just like to know, um, why is the Brilliant Street car park taking so long?
Well, it's.
What issues are there?
Not that we'd like to put people on the spot, sorry.
Well, I, I went past the other day and the, the seal's gone down, um, it's, it, most of the, um, conflict works have been completed, so it's probably, I don't know the exact date, uh, acting director of infrastructure services when it's complete, but it can't be too far away, so, um, it'll be, you know, the line marking hasn't been done and things like that. Um, it's, it's progressing reasonably well at this point.
Um, yes, I'm just going to hand to the acting director who's wanting to say something at the back.
Yeah, through the chair, it is, it is very close to being completed as CEO says, um, and there were some issues with the project where the scope was, was uh, given to the contractors and then taken back because there was a, a perception that the council was going to do that part of the scope, but then given back to the contractor, so it's actually delayed the project, but as the CEO says, it's very close to being completed now.
Thank you.
Also through the chair, if I can just mention, um, about councillors' involvement in projects. I am presenting to the asset committee the next, um, meeting, a new project advisory group process that I've used in many councils where we start developing scopes and costs in October, November the previous year and go through a, a, a process where the, the project advisory group, I call PAG, um, approves projects under a priority of safety, environmental needs, community, those kind of things, um, and clear consequence likelihood and put forward those projects, and if the council says we've only got twenty million dollars starting July next year, then the twenty million dollars is a cutoff, and then anybody, any projects after that get put on hold, and they're up for, uh, possible grants or anything else, but we, we now have a stable of projects that move forward and then work through a, a number of workshops, including councillors in February, March and approved in April to start gung ho on the first July, so that's the process that I believe we should be using, and I've talked to the CEO about that, and I think he's full on board with it, and so is some of the other asset people, so that way you'll have, um, full involvement, I mean, a councillor can sit on the PAG process if they want, um, but very involved in the projects prior to the budgets, if you like, and, and approval in first July, so hopefully we can start that process in September, October this year. Sorry, I won't be here in September, so it'll have to be October.
And, well, thank you for that, and through the chair, Madam Mayor, um, just like to thank, uh, Director Chad for giving me the opportunity with the parks upgrade program, um, it's good to know a little bit more about what's going on, because I do get asked a lot of questions in the public about it, and, um, the other point I would like to make, the Camberwell aerodrome upgrade, we did talk about it in the workshop. Are we getting someone in to talk to us councillors about that? Remember we said that we wanted to get someone in to actually talk about it?
I think the project was discussed, uh, at the last workshop and I think it's go, gone away to get some further information and then come back.
Okay.
Thank you, um, councillor Tully, would you like to speak to your report?
No, no, all good, thanks.
Just thought I'd give you the opportunity. Okay, all in favour of receiving that report? That's Carrie. Item fourteen point two works and operations overview report, May twenty twenty four to June twenty twenty four. Do I have a mover?
Yeah, just got to get it right on the number mate. I, um, council, um, recommends received and accepts in May, June, two thousand and four works and operations report.
Do I have a second for that motion? Councillor Coghlan, would you like to speak to that councillor Tully?
Um, yes, yes, um, I think that, I've talked to, um, a few of the businesses around, just to, um, outside of council on getting the graffiti and vandalism, um, taken off their properties, and, um, they all seem to be in favour. Um, I've talked to the Isa Hotel, probably more so than anyone, is, um, trying to present, you know, and that, they're alert to all them things that I've talked to them about, and they're all under these graffiti and graffiti and vandalism issues, so, um, the CBD, look, um, I'm just still wondering about, um, uh, when we're going to get, uh, you know, cones and that have been set up, I've been told, um, Greg said that they're going to be done on the weekend, but sometimes I think that these issues should be, have everything ready to go and then do it, you know, not, um, start and then, and, and sit there for quite a while, so if going forward, any, any issues, we'd like to, um, be done in the CBD where the people are, most traffic are, um, people wise, is, um, have it all ready to go and then just, just get it done.
Okay, thank you councillor Tully, any further commentary?
Yeah, it's fourteen point three, the gates and grids policy for adoption.
Hang on, you're.
No, we're not up to that yet.
No, you, you're still.
Oh?
Yes.
Fourteen point two.
Councillor Crowther?
Uh, just, yeah, I mean, obviously we're, um, working hard with the, the clean, cleaning up and that sort of stuff, so we sort of need to now start encouraging businesses to sort of get on, on board with us, um, obviously there's a lot of businesses out there, they seem to think it's council's responsibility everywhere to sort of clean up, but if we can get them working with us, and I think, like, when we're talking with the, the, um, the two major shopping centres, I think we need to sort of really be stressing with them to sort of start working with us and sort of trying to get, get a cleaning program in place for their sort of car parks as well as the businesses that they start looking at, you know, trying to even do a bit of cleaning, cleaning up around their businesses as well, as sort of, because if we all pitch in, it's going to make it a lot, lot easier to get the town looking better, especially coming up to rodeo time, we were sort of want to try and put the town on display, so it's good that they've got that scrubber out there working on the, on the footpath and that now, and then also I think we, if we're all doing that bit, bit more as well, is businesses and and, um, locals that we sort of can get the town looking good just in time for rodeo.
Through the chair councillor Crowther has just brought up a point, the scrubber, is it actually working with water now? No, what, what I'm asking is the footpath cleaner that was purchased that went, went around the CBD, scrubbing the footpaths, is that up and running?
Um, through the chair, I had some great feedback from Shelley at Kmart saying, um, it was working and they'd done a great job outside Kmart just recently.
Yeah, I got the same, I got the same email from them.
Okay, um. And, and sorry, while I'm, while I'm on that with Kmart in relation to what councillor Crowther said, um, Shelley at Kmart did say in relation to that car park, it, when I was there recently, it was looking really untidy with rubbish, and she said it's basically people pulling up, just dumping waste and cleaning their cars out in the car park. So if we can remind everyone, like, we want to have some civic pride, please, if you're going to clean your car out, put your rubbish in the bin, we don't want it in the Kmart car park. You know, keeping our town clean is everybody's business and everyone needs to do their share, and, um, dumping rubbish is just not appropriate. Thank you Deputy Mayor, back to you.
Um, so two other things, have we put in, and I did ask for it in a workshop, that the seats at the Buchanan Park be cleaned before the rodeo? Uh, proper clean from the top to the bottom with a pressure cleaner, I'm just wondering if anything has happened on that? On that front?
Uh, the works haven't been completed yet, but they have been scheduled prior to a rodeo.
Okay. Um, and the next one, the bins around town, um, there was a process where we were cleaning them by hand, has that stopped because?
Definitely stopped.
Because the, the bins are looking really, really bad again.
Uh, through you Madam Mayor, I'll take that one on notice, as a part of council's contract with our waste contractor, um, the contractor is obliged when they do pick up to pick up rubbish within a certain radius uh, and undertake maintenance, so if that isn't occurring, I'll raise it with them.
But I thought, um, that was something that Mount Isa City Council was doing, so did we subcontract that out?
So-
We actually had a person doing it from council.
As a part of council's, uh, ten-year contract with our waste contractor, that's included within that piece of work.
Okay.
I'd like to support councillor Coghlan on that because they're definitely not cleaned. That's all the new ones that have been put up.
They were really good for a while when our person was doing it, but they've gone back to normal now.
He just talking the outside of the bin, like the, the, sort of the stainless steel things.
Yes, they usually clean top, inside, sides and everything, but they're looking really, really bad.
Okay.
At the moment.
I'll take that one on notice.
Thank you.
Thank you director, any other, um, comments before we go to the vote? Everyone accepts, accepting the motion? Yep, Carrie, thank you. Um, item fourteen point three, gates and grids policy for adoption, do I have a mover?
I'll move. That council adopt the gates and grids policy version one and that council commits to a comprehensive infrastructure inspection of the gates and grids within public roads of the Mount Isa City local government area.
Do I have a second for the motion? Councillor Coghlan? Um, would you like to speak to that?
Oh, I'll just let people know that, um, it's just the overview and I will read it, that the Transport Infrastructure Act nineteen ninety four and the Transport Operations Road Use Management Act nineteen ninety five imposes statutory duty on council to construct, maintain and operate public roads to promote the safe transport of persons and goods, while the Local Government Act two thousand and nine grants council control of all public roads in our local government area. So this is, um, the first time this has come in and it's something that council is endeavouring to, um, start the process on checking, checking them all to make sure they're all compliant.
Thank you, you had something councillor Coghlan?
Yeah, I just, um, I just wanted to, to thank Greg. Um, I know I asked a lot of questions around this, um, and it's simply, I like to, to know things. Um, in terms of policies, I like to go back to the legislation and that, um, because I believe if you know why you're doing something, then that helps you to, to achieve that. So, um, that's why I was asking all those questions and I thank you for the, the, um, the effort you put into answering.
Thank you, all in favour? Carrie? Item fourteen point four, electrical vehicle charging station sites, do I have a mover?
Yeah, I'll move.
Councillor Crowther?
Uh, it's recommended that-
Oh, hang on, do we need a second for the motion?
I haven't even-
Oh, you're sorry, you're still moving it. Slow down turbo.
Uh, that council endorses the establishment of an EV DC fast charge station in one of the following option A, B, C or D. Uh, the endorsed the, the non-binding letter of intent to be issued to NRMA following the resolution of the selected option. Approve asset disposal and demolition of existing redundant toilet blocks and old substation at thirty-four Mile Street regardless of the selection above. Authorise the CEO to seek ministerial consent for the Department of Resources to permit the land to be used at commercial, commercial purpose, as an EV fast charging station should any of the three sites require it.
Okay, councillor Crowther, you just need to change the first part of that motion, the first point to pick either A, B or C if you want to substitute.
Yep.
Or D, sorry.
So, um-
Which are not easy to find because it's all the way down.
It is, I found it down the bottom, so, um, so yeah, sorry, so endorse the establishment of an EV DC fast sta- charge station at, um, with option D, which was, um, site, option D is site, um, two, at thirty-four Mile Street is the first option. Site two, uh, site three of, is the second option of seventeen to nineteen Atherton Street and then site one, which was the third option at Centennial Place Car Park.
Thank you, do I have a second for that motion?
Ballard.
Thank you councillor Ballard, would you like to speak to that councillor Crowther?
Uh, yeah, obviously, um, it's been a lot of work to getting this organised, um, EV stations are going to probably need to be popping up a lot more around the city, um, but this will be the first of a, a DC fast station. Um, the benefits for, um, um, uh, recommendation for thirty-four Mile Street is that they'll be looking to dispose, um, of the existing infrastructure there, which is, would have been a cost to council, um, if we were going to proceed with that demolition, so then it's, we've got a bit of a saving there as well and it just puts a, um, a newer sort of setup where it'll, um, options for the DC charging be there, where that'll be, people can charge up there and also go and then, um, visit a, a lot of local businesses in that Mile Street area, so it's sort of a bit of a win for the businesses because while they're sitting around waiting for the car to charge, they'll, um, be able to benefit from that.
Thank you councillor Crowther, um, anyone else have anything to say?
It just says in there that thirty-four Mile says, um, uh, no parking, no one parks there, well, that's, that's not correct. Just want to make, just notify that please.
Thank you councillor Tully, are we ready to go to the vote? All in favour? So we've got-
Which option were you using?
Option D.
Oh, what option?
I, I, I moved option D as the, as the option.
G.
Yep.
All in favour?
I'm-
Against, so we've got four, four and two against.
Can I speak on that?
Oh, you did speak to it, didn't you councillor Tully?
Yeah, he can speak why he said against, eh?
Oh, you can speak again.
Yeah. I'm against it, the reason why I'm against it is, these are going to keep coming up like we've been, um, what councillor Crowther says. So this is one block, so all of a sudden they'll be taking up all blocks by three or four parks, so, um, where do we stop with u- utilizing these blocks that are available in town? Um, with, um, by taken up by three or four parks just for electrical, um, uh, substation, so I think there's other areas that are in parking areas that, that could be utilized a lot better.
Okay, and just to comment that, um, I guess the motion is we're putting the three sites up to, um, main roads and they'll be picking the site that's most suitable for their purposes.
NRMA.
Oh, NRMA. And they'll be picking the site that's most suitable for their purposes. Okay, item fourteen point five, Mount Isa Sewage Treatment Plant Inlet Emergency Works, do I have a mover for that motion?
Um, recommendation that the council, um, awards, I'll, I'll just do the, the summary.
Um, if you just want to move the-
Recommendation of the award contracted Barclay Engineering for the sum of forty-five thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven, excluding GST, to undertake emergency works of the sewage treatment plant inlet screenings and grid systems to avoid any immediate short-term environmental spills or overflows. And that councils award the contract to the Barclay Engineering with additional funds of three hundred and forty-three thousand six hundred and one, excluding GST, being for the long-term asset renewal, refurnishment of all components of, of the inlet works.
Um, do I have a second for that motion?
Seconded deputy mayor.
Um, would you like to speak to that councillor Tully?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm just, Dan, uh, councillor Ballard's already brought it up really, but it's just something that I think, um, we, we were out there early before the, um, budget and we, we were talked about it, but not really, someone must have known all about this sort of stuff, so going forward, I'd still like to see, you know, um, bring this, um, information or problems to us earlier, so we can look at it in pre-budgets, um, issues more than trying to find three hundred and, you know, four hundred and th- four hundred thousand, um, after the budgets or, um, we're only, um, one month into it.
Thank you councillor Tully, any further comments? All in favour? That's carried. Um, it's now time for general business and, and, and as stated in the mere minute, um, it's my intention to go around the room to see if anyone has any gen- general business, also give you the opportunity to say, um, something that you're happy with in the first hundred days and where something you still want to work on. Thank you councillor Ballard.
Thanks very much. Uh, for me, the first hundred days in council has been a really steep learning curve. I was disappointed to have had to pass on the increases in our operational costs to the ratepayers and I certainly appreciate there's a lot of locals that are doing it quite tough at the moment. Bringing responsibility of our water assets back under the control of council is a priority and the pursuit of North West water has led to a stakeholder meeting which will take place between, um, various representatives of the two councils in the North West and the department later this month. Having control over those assets and keeping the revenue they generate will give this council the opportunity to either reduce the cost of, uh, providing water to our residents or to use the profits to, those profits to improve our facilities around town. Uh, other highlights for me include the important and long overdue work that we're doing around economic diversification, changes to our procurement practices to help maximize participation by local businesses and the development of the PMO.
Thank you councillor Ballard, good job. Um, councillor Crowther?
Uh, yeah, I've got, uh, two things, first up I'd, uh, just want to also congratulate on the NADOC, um, week. There was obviously a lot of, uh, different events and they did, did a lot of great planning where they sort of had all these events and not really many of them clashed with each other, so they did really well and to all the award recipients from the NADOC ball. They had, um, some very good applicants there, um, from what we saw and, um, some deserving winners. Uh, busy week as well, um, out of town with, um, we had teams out there supporting, uh, sort of, um, representing Mount Isa in the Michael Morgan, Morgan Cup as well as in the netball of the Macca's Cup, so it's good to see sort of the kids are getting out there and sort of competing and sort of getting into that extra competition, so it'd be just great to see that we could get some of these, um, events held in Mount Isa to sort of bring and then get again, showcase the city. And then, uh, first hundred days, obviously for us, like, um, councillor Ballard said, it's been a steep learning curve, but we've sort of done a lot of, um, a lot of meetings, a lot of, um, learning and a lot of sort of training to sort of ensure that we're sort of getting up to speed as quick as we can with, um, the governance of it all and it's sort of, obviously it pays a major importance for us to, um, make sort of not just, um, informed decisions, but the, like, legal decisions as well, so we're sort of up on that. Um, my collaboration with the Mount Isa Motorsports Committee, I feel like they were going, going strong with that and, um, I'd sort of like to thank the, the people on that committee that's sort of been also putting the effort in to try and get that up and, um, to an area where we can then start sort of moving a lot forward a lot quicker, um, because it's an event, uh, it's a committee that's sort of been going on for over ten years and not much results, so if we can sort of start to move that along, we're sort of, I'm glad that we've sort of already got two meetings put in. Uh, and then just getting out there and meeting, um, the community, uh, sort of going to the, the events that have been held, um, sort of understanding their needs, um, so we can sort of then continue to grow and, um, make the community a lot better.
Thank you councillor Crowther, councillor Tully?
Um, yeah, I'll just elaborate on what, what they've all said, to be honest with you, it's been, um, it's, um, I think we've, across the, um, public out there that we all seem to be getting on really well, which I think wasn't happening before, so I think that's a good, um, a good starter and if we can just keep heading towards getting the small things right because, you know, I'm big on it and making the city a lot better place to look at and, and, um, encourage people to come back again and if we get all the little things right, I'm sure the big things will make it, will be an easy decision for us.
Thank you councillor Tully, councillor Coghlan?
Um, yeah, I think our greatest achievement in the first hundred days is obtaining shirts for councillors. But as the deputy mayor mentioned, there is a deal of frustration, um, within councillors at the pace of things. However, the hundred days, I believe, has shown that there's an appetite for change within councillors and staff. As a group, I think our councillors enjoy an open communication environment where there's no fear of saying what we think or what we feel. Excuse me, we still need to improve, but we also need to ensure that that environment's widened to include our workers. I want our council to lead the way in Queensland councils in efficiency, proactiveness and innovation as Mount Isa has in the past, we need to go back there and, and they're part of that. Um, we ask a lot of questions and as I stated earlier, I, I don't want workers to think that we're, we're after them. We want to ask questions because we want to know as much as we can so that we can help them do their jobs and to get things done. Um, and that comes down to trust and that only comes with time and experience and, and I just hope that the first hundred days, I think, has set a platform that we're not going away, we're going to be here for, for four years, um, and we're going to keep working hard to, to make this council the, the best in Queensland, because I think this place is the best in Queensland.
Thank you councillor Coghlan, deputy mayor.
Um, I just, my last term as council, I really enjoyed working with the five other councillors and I did learn a lot from all of them, so I'm even looking forward the other new councillors on board here, the new five councillors and working with the mayor again, um, I know I'm going to learn a lot. Very different set of councillors this time, but I believe we are a good council, we are talking, uh, communicating with, with each other and I really don't believe the people of Mount Isa have seen the best of us yet. It's been a hard first couple of months, um, you know, you had the threat, budget thrown at you straight away, you've got to get up to scratch with everything that we've known what's been happening in the last four years and I think everyone's done a, a really terrific job at that, but I honestly don't believe that we've hit our straps yet and I think we've got a, we've got a lot more to achieve. Um, we do need to get the basics correct, if you can't get the basics correct, we can't get the, the big jobs done and just something that I'm happy with is that the park upgrades, uh, a hap- uh, replacement, I shouldn't call it an upgrade, it's park replacement program is working well and, um, that'll come into effect, um, right for summertime, which is going to be good, because if the families are happy here in Mount Isa, um, you know, happy wife, happy life, so, happy husband, happy life, I don't know, never had that pleasure.
Thank you deputy mayor for those pearls of wisdom. Um, I'd like to just add something that came to my mind too, some, um, that we worked on over the last four years but didn't achieve and that was deciding on a, a location for the miners memorial too, I think, um, having that vote early in the term and providing some sort of certainty to that committee, um, made them very happy and I was, I was pleased to get that over the line straight up also. There being no further agenda items, the time is now ten twenty-five ish? Ten twenty-seven and I now declare the ordinary meaning of council clause.